Get in there, you can't.
Yeah, yeah, I don't.
Yeah.
You can't get in there, that's.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the w- the straight door back, you can get it.
Yeah, it's basically.
It's got a little cipher on it, which would tell me.
There we go.
Yes, they're recording.
Okay. There we go.
Let's see.
Call the meeting to order at six fifty one.
I did.
And let everyone know who's here, we are being digitally recorded, so please be aware of that when you're speaking. So the first thing we'll do is, can anyone hear for open session? Okay, Katie, do you have anything to?
Um, just dingy dash is August twenty seventh, the entry forms are due by August twentieth. Um, Giacomo's will be set up with some yummy treats there for sale, so um, there will be food again. And again, uh, come out and enjoy ten AM Brigham Pond. Can't blame if you don't play, so first prize is three hundred bucks, don't miss out.
Anything else?
No, all right, now we'll just, let's go.
Thank you very much. Okay, next thing we have is the uh, consent agenda, so we, Chair would ask for unanimous consent for the items. Uh, it's a reappointment for Julia Donald as Emergency Management, I mean Assistant Director. Appointed for one year till six thirty twenty twenty three. And we're appointing Dolores O'Dwyne to Historical Commission, again for one year until six thirty twenty twenty three, so I would ask for unanimous consent.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and second. All right, well, it's new business, first thing we have.
Do you want to vote on that, Jeff?
We have to vote, yeah.
Oh, I thought it was unanimous, okay.
No, yeah.
All right, all of our favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Motion passed, thank you. New business, uh, Town Administrator Search, we have Bob Mercier here from uh, MRI. And he's gonna talk to us about the search process, et cetera.
Good evening.
Good evening.
And, and thank you uh, for inviting us, and thank you for last week's uh, vote, I saw the, the meeting, I watched a couple of your meetings.
Uh, to see how you behave.
Should've watched. Because I.
There's nothing, yes, nothing like life.
This one.
I, I can guarantee it, candidates will look at some of your meetings and uh, you know, uh, just to see how you behave.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
So I noticed a couple of things, uh, challenges right away, you need somebody who understands Zoom and cell service. So those will probably be in the package somewhere. So again, thank you all, uh, I'm Bob, you, you've got my stuff, uh, I live over in uh, Tinsborough, just moved. So I have no connectivity with anything right now, I'm going out of my mind, my wife's being operated on for a knee replacement on Wednesday, so I'm going crazy. But uh, but we're thrilled, we're thrilled. Uh, you probably know, I've known Ryan for a little bit, uh, they're friends of my daughter, uh, where they live now. And um, I've been talking to him for a little bit about getting involved in local government, I saw him as somebody with a lot of capabilities. And uh, well, you all know that, and that's how we knew each other. Uh, and he and I have been talking over the last couple of years of, about the profession, and what goes on, and those type of things. So I, I have known him for a little while. Um, you know, you've got a couple of things that you need to think about, uh, and we'll walk through a schedule a little bit. Uh, it's a very competitive environment today, uh, we don't see, I'll give you an example, Berlin up the road. Uh, about three thousand people, uh, they had twenty one candidates. But, but they also pay well. You saw their advertisement, uh, up to, and I can't get connections, but tonight, they're uh, they're signing the contract with their new uh, TA. Um, they're not paying one fifty, but they're, they're paying in that range, so, um, and that's three thousand people. You, you know what happened with Ryan and going over to Kyle Island and those type, and I'm not suggesting you have to go there. Just be aware that uh, the salary range that you may be talking is gonna limit the candidates. And the type of candidates. You might have to, and this is just a suggestion, again, I haven't seen any candidates, because we haven't done anything with advertising or anything else. You, you might have to think about somebody who has not done this before. And you just got off one who hadn't done it before. And it seemed to have worked out quite well. So it's the right person, uh, doesn't necessarily have to have, you know, the MPA from Kennedy School of Government and those type of things. Uh, just the right person, and that could be somebody not in this current field. As, as a town administrator or an assistant town administrator. I'll give you a little history on assistant town administrators. Uh, we, when we got Berlin, because they, uh, like you, by the way, that's a positive, you have a charter. That's important for people who are interested in a community like this. Uh, we are doing a, currently a larger community on the South Shore, and they don't have a charter, they don't have a bylaw, they have a job description for their TA. And they're having problems, and we, we know, because we're recruiting, they're having problems in finding somebody. Because it's a pretty big community, eighteen thousand people, and they're just, people who are looking at it, were saying, I don't feel real good about that. Cause I'm not quite sure what my responsibilities are, it's nowhere on paper. You know, it's a job description, which you folks can change next Monday night. So, it, it uh, it's softening the feel that we have down there, that's not your issue. Your issue is you have a very defined uh, charter with the responsibilities of the town administrator, which is a good thing, that's in your favor, checkmark, Hobbitson. Um, the problem you're gonna face right now, and, and we can talk about that, is where you think you may be going with salary. We'll have to, we'll have to talk about that before we actually advertise and put an ad in. Towns treat it differently, some towns put a range in. Uh, that gives you some flexibility, it also gives a potential candidate the idea that, hmm, uh, that, that's getting attractive, because they're, it, I'm talking about the upside now. Uh, maybe they'll go there for me, so, but that's up to you to decide, and before we move forward with an ad, we'll have to talk to you about what you wan- wanna do with that. I know what the current salary is, uh, I know where you are there, and you've been involved, so you, you sort of know. Um, so that's gonna probably, depending on what you do, that's gonna probably limit your pool out there. Geographically, uh, you'll limit a pool, uh, because you're, 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 you're a bit out there, you're in the, the middle of, you know, Worcester and, you know, Lowell and those type of areas. Uh, it's a beautiful community, we didn't have any problem recruiting, when I mentioned earlier about the twenty one people who, who applied for Berlin, uh, they had real quality. They had real solid people apply there. Uh, it's a beautiful.
Right on four ninety five.
Right on four ninety five, two ninety, they've got some industrial stuff going on.
Massive bikes right down the street, yeah. You got a lot of commercial properties in town.
Lots of commercials, so.
They're more money than we have.
Yes, yes, and it's, it's a, it's an exciting place, so they've got good people, they did, in fact, I mentioned earlier about the assistance, they got some assistance. From bigger communities, uh, which is a logical next step to go, go become a TA somewhere. The problem with that is you get closer, not necessarily where you are, but as you get closer to the four ninety five, one twenty eight sort of belt. Some of those assistants are making a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, assistants, in some of the bigger communities.
Yeah, 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 what's the population of those communities?
Big, big.
Yeah, thirty thousand, forty thousand?
Right, 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 so, you know, when, when we think about potential assistants coming to a place uh, like Hobbitson. It, it's gonna be difficult to attract those people, um, but, be that as it may. Uh, you're gonna get people, cause it's an attractive place, and as I said, you have the positive stuff going on, like the charter. Uh, you, you seem to, again, I've watched, you seem to be fairly stable. Um.
Just depends on who you ask.
Well, yeah, but, but every town has that, you know, every town has that, just by way of reference. I was a selectman in Tinsborough for, I don't know, five years or so, so that was an interesting time for me, I was also obviously the town manager in Burlington and Billrecker. And I did some time in Boxborough as an interim, uh, for me with interims. Um, so I know the small town, I know the big towns, um, but i- i- being on the other side, uh, as a selectman in Tinsborough. Uh, we just patch it, passed a town manager uh, charter for Tinsborough, we didn't have it, uh, we had a relatively weak TA, so we got that through. Uh, it gives me a good sense, a- as, on both sides of the, of the out, of the aisle, uh, as to what the, what the potential candidates will be looking for. And what frankly, the appointing authority is gonna be looking for. So that's all gonna be part of the process, if we talk to you folks individually, I need to know what you want. You know, I, I need to know that, and uh, we, we don't wanna set up anybody, nor do you, for failure. So unless you're upfront and honest, and these are individual discussions, by the way, they're very confidential between myself, my partner Buzz, and you individually, cause we wanna hear it. Um.
I have no problem telling you exactly what I think.
I think that's good.
Yes, I'll do it right now on TV, I don't really care.
Yeah, I, I think that's good, because we, we need to know that, we need to know what the layout is uh, in the community, so that somebody who comes in here, and we're not only gonna talk to you, we're gonna talk to your department managers. That's your call, you tell us who you want us to talk to, we're gonna talk to boards and committee members, maybe the chairs of the various boards, certainly the finance committee. Uh, we always like to talk to them, uh, about their perspective, uh, on finances in the community. And they, they, they look pretty good to me, I mean, you're double A rate, you, you've, you've got some things going on, you don't have a lot of ability to increase.
Right.
That's, but that's not unique to you, that's, but it's uh, but you're in, you're in decent shape, uh, you, you s- your budget just passed. I don't know how many, I didn't watch the town meeting, but I don't know how many questions there were about that, or any of that, uh, but it seemed to be through.
Went, went, went right through.
Yeah, well, well, that's good, that suggests the people in the community have some faith.
Went right through. Mm-hmm.
They understand you're doing your job, uh, you've got Ryan preparing the budget for you, you've got your finance people looking at it, so people in town say, they kind of know what they're doing, good, pass the budget. They'll always squawk, it's too much, but you know, it's uh, it always works, you've got a capital improvement plan, you've got a lot of things in place, you've got financial regs, rules and regs that you've adopted, so. We know all that, and that's all good stuff, that's all good for a candidate that might be looking, uh, to come in, and probably their first gig as a TA. So, um, one of the things that we saw, we, we know you appointed a, a uh, search committee, which is fine, seven member.
Mm-hmm.
So, we're gonna need, uh, the names of those folks, and the telephone numbers and those type of things, and, and I'll, I don't know if you have my, I don't know who you want the point of contact to be. Um, from, I was looking at them, but I don't make that decision.
Notice how we all just.
Yeah, yeah, I saw that, that, that's good, you know how to delegate, that's all good.
You're welcome.
So that's good, and I'll, I'll, I'll talk to you.
Okay.
And uh, I'll, maybe tomorrow or so, I'll give you a ring.
Okay, that's fine, yes.
Some stuff. Uh, so I'll need that, I, I'm gonna wanna talk to the search committee, uh, the screening committee, and uh, which leads me to, I saw the charge you gave those, those folks. And, and uh, Jeff, you talked to me about the, the speed that you wanna move this process along. You gotta be a little careful, and we, we really need to clarify and define the role of the screening committee. And when I say that, it, screening committees are fine, we dealt with it, we deal with it in most of our communities. Um, some screening committees wanna get more involved than, than we would like them to, uh, because it delays the process. Not, not the decisions they make, or it just delays the process. Because if you've gotta get seven people to get together for a meeting, if there's a, if there's a timing issue on something we need. Sometimes it just delays, oh, well, we can't get together this week, next week we can, and we're like, oh boy, that's just gonna.
Well, when we appointed them.
Yep.
It was with the idea that, um, when we called to see if they would accept the appointment, they were told the kind of aggressive schedule we wanted.
Okay.
Could they handle that, if not, we would get someone else, so if they said yes, they've been already told that we wanna move this thing.
Okay. So they've been told, so, I, I'll, I'll just give you some instances, for instance, again, some communities want it, uh, they want that kind of control.
Yes.
And some communities just trust us, because we do it all the time. So for instance, the ad, as we prepare an ad, the ads are ads, they're pretty standard, we get material from you, we get your budget information, we get all of that stuff. And then, as I mentioned, Jeff, we'll work out what you guys want to advertise the salary as, but the rest of the ad is just a standardized ad. Some communities want that to go back to a screening committee, they wanna edit it, you know, well, you said and here, it should be or, and if that's gonna happen. Uh, it's gonna delay the process, it's manageable, we can do it, but it's just gonna delay your whole process. And we don't mind sharing the advertisement with the board before it goes out, you say any issues, just call us and we'll revise it before we put it out, we generally advertise for thirty days. We will most often advertise in the, uh, we, I say six regional mass, like Mass Associations, New Hampshire Association, Vermont. I'm not sure we're gonna do that with Rhode Island or Connecticut, those are high paying communities, and I'm not sure what you're gonna, what we're gonna get out of that.
Mm-hmm.
We also typically would do, and Heather, Heather knows this, we typically would do the ICMA, which is the International Association. Um, I, I kind of think that's an overreach for your town, it's four hundred and fifty or five hundred bucks to advertise that, just for the ICMA. I don't think that's gonna generate much for you. You know, the small town, uh, administrators here in Massachusetts, we, we've got a link to them, that's, that's a very good source, the Mass Municipal Association. New Hampshire's interesting, cause we do a lot of work in New Hampshire, and they've got a lot of TA positions and ATA positions that are in a hundred thousand dollar range. So I'm thinking, that may be a place for us to really, uh, dig a little bit. So in terms of advertising, we'll probably advertise in the uh, Mass Municipal Association, probably advertise in New Hampshire, maybe Maine, cause we do get some Southern Maine folks. That wanna come back to Massachusetts, they either started in Mass, or, and their first job was in a small town in Maine, and they wanna come back. And maybe Vermont, we're gonna stay away, I think, from Rhode Island and Connecticut, which we, we typically do. So that costs, and we put it in our proposals, a thousand to twelve hundred, we recommend, it won't be, it won't be near a thousand if we just go with those four. We don't advertise, we, we don't recommend you advertise, uh, in things like the Globe, or LinkedIn, or any of that, because you, you know, you know, you probably all know LinkedIn, you're manager, administrator, boom. You get people from all over the place saying, I'm an administrator in IT, and I can do that job, and all that kind of stuff, so.
Bob, question?
Yeah.
So when you did, um, you said your most recent ser- search was uh, Berlin.
Yeah.
I imagine you, you advertised in all of those local places, including the other states.
Yes.
How many candidates who were qualified, did you receive that were from another state like New Hampshire, or Connecticut, or Maine?
Uh, of the twenty one, there were four. Most of them were from Massachusetts, most of the applicants were from Massachusetts, and the best result we got was from Sm- Small Town Administrator Association.
Okay, and, yep, Stan, just so happens I know the person who runs the list, sir.
The SDAM. I wouldn't doubt that.
We have a question.
Oh, question.
Can you read it, or do you?
Who is it?
It's Pitney, Jamie Pitney.
Jamie Pitney.
Okay.
The last two searches yielded excellent appointees and very good runners up. Why would we follow the engagement plan role, not follow the engagement plan roles used for the past two searches, was the inquiry.
Okay. I don't know what the last search was, I, I know who got the job, uh, but I don't know what you're following, we're fine with that, we, we, we work with the community, it's your search, it's not my search, it's your search. We wanna find the right person, you obviously wanna find the right person, and if that worked, the last time you did it, that's fine, again, I'll hop on the timing.
Mm-hmm.
We, we need to control the timing, uh, because that.
Mm-hmm. Absolutely, yes.
Becomes somewhat unwieldy.
Yeah.
Mm.
And the second thing I'll say, and again, I don't know what you did the last time around, I'm willing to talk to anybody about it, uh, is the whole confidentiality issue, we feel very strongly about. We, you've hired us because this is what we do. We need to, we need, we hope that you have enough faith that we're not gonna present you with people who aren't qualified to do the job.
Mm-hmm.
We've had just a few, not a lot, just a few communities that wanted to see all of the resumes. And we're reluctant to do that, because we've built up a pretty good reputation with the candidates that we see, and we see them in more than one. And if their name gets out prior to them becoming fi- everybody knows when they're finalists, their name is out there.
Mm-hmm.
But if their names get out prior to that, they probably haven't told their appointing authority, and then they look at us and say, you told me this was gonna be in confidence.
Right.
So it's just something to think about, and um, here's the typical way we do it, Jeff. What we would do is, we would narrow down the field, whatever it is, uh, Buzz and I will go through the resumes, we score them, we have an actual score. Um, and none of this is public, cause it's all internal to the company. So we score the resumes, you know, this one had the right educational qualifications, had some experience, not a lot, but some experience, this one had a little more experience. So we narrow it down to.
Also taking in what the towns have already told you that they're looking for.
That's right, yeah, that's right.
A profile of, yeah.
That's, that's right. Uh, so when, when we narrow down the field, and I'll get back into the profile and the challenge. Um, we, we bring, we, we actually send out essay questions, we develop essay questions based on what we hear from the community, what are your challenges? We try to narrow it down to maybe three, uh, because it's work. And the reason we do it, we don't want somebody just looking for a job. We want somebody that's looking to come to Hobbitson, and we want you to do some work, do some research on the town.
Excuse me, but when you say three, that, that you would then present to our search committee for the interviews, or?
We can, no, we can develop those questions with the search committee, if that be the case, or with you, with the, with the board.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
But we send it out to the eight or nine that we've narrowed down the total field to.
Okay. Mm-hmm.
And then typically one or two drop out, because we know they're not as serious as we thought they were going to be, uh, which tells us something, and we're okay with that. Those that respond to the essay question, we bring to the search committee, and say, here's the people, seven of them responded, you decide who you wanna interview as semifinalists.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
It's up to them, we don't, we don't rank them, we don't do any of that, uh, but if you get seven or eight responses, the screening committee will go through, we'll be here with them, and we'll walk them through. Uh, because it is a tech session, we'll walk them through the eight candidates and tell them what we know about them, uh, where their strengths are, where their weaknesses are. And they'll have the material, they'll have the resumes, they'll have the answers to the que- they'll have the questions, and then the answers to the question, so they'll have all that before we actually meet with them. And they decide who they think they wanna interview as semifinalists, and then from.
Send up, sending up to the board.
And then whoever they decide, we certainly recommend a minimum of three.
Mm-hmm.
Go to the board, um, some search committee were doing a, a sort of almost similar commu- rich community, Sherwin, we're doing that now. They had four, that, they had a search committee, and they moved four candidates to the appointing authority. Um, so, it depends, it depends on if the committee feels strongly enough that they have three real quality people, they can send you, you, people three, or they can send four.
So Bob, question?
Yeah.
So on the essay questions, so we talked a little bit about this, I think, the other week.
Yeah.
I think we did, or maybe I was losing.
We did.
No, we did, no, we did.
It's always possible. Um, so with the essay questions, I know, you know, being candidate myself, when you're job searching, whether you're looking at one community or multiple communities.
Right.
You know, you're putting in just about as many hours as you're currently working in the week, so it's, it's really time consuming to apply for a job and to do it right, and even the research.
It is. Yeah.
And where, you know, the candidates have many options and opportunities right now, and it's not like, you know, this is the only job in the next six months that's gonna open if they'd like to be interested in the field.
Yep.
Does it make sense to consider perhaps skipping the essay process and requesting instead that people submit, you know, a writing sample, so we can get a, a deal of that?
Makes sense to me, makes sense to me, and, and you may be right, until I get a real feel for this community, I may come back and say, you know what, Heather was right, essays don't make sense.
Cause that saves us. Sometimes they say that.
Uh, however, you want a writing sample, you wanna know that people can write.
Yeah.
And the other thing we do is, once we get it down to, uh, the people that would, in this case, get essay questions, or send us writing samples. We do phone follow-up, Buzz and I do a phone follow-up at those candidates, and we talk to them for forty five minutes each. And we explore things that aren't on resumes.
Mm-hmm.
Tell us something that's not here, tell us anything you wanna tell us about why you're applying, uh, what prompted you to apply, are you in other searches? We find out all of that stuff, so that when we go to the search committee, again, it's all an exec session, we can say, this current person is in three other searches. So if you're gonna wanna interview this person, you better move. And tha- that's what we stress, is move the process, keep the process going, because that's only the semifinals, and then you've got finals. I know a community not too far from you, uh, suggested three finalists, and one dropped out before the interviews, and they only had two to choose from. And one of those other finalists was in our search, and could have been, they could have ended up with one person.
Hmm.
So.
That sounds like a Hobbitson problem, all over the place.
Yeah, well. Yeah, well, y- you know what, it's, it's going on, it is tough to recruit municipal employees today, whether it's a finance director, or a police chief, whatever it happens to be, it's just difficult today. But, that being said, there, there are opportunities out there, and we, we would hope that we would find somebody who really wants to make their mark in a community like this. Um, because this is a good stepping stone, and I know you probably don't wanna hear that, but that's, that's, that's gonna be what happens.
Oh, no, that's what we are, absolutely, yeah.
Um, we had this discussion with Tu- Wyndham, you know, Town of Wyndham, beautiful, Hamilton Wyndham? We did that, we did two searches, uh, two searches for them, and the, it, when we were gonna do the third one, and we backed out at the end, but. When we were gonna do the third one, the select board was talking to us and said, why are we a training ground? I said, well, you're a small town, you're gonna get somebody with a lot of energy and ambition here, I hope, you don't want somebody to retire in, in your town. You want somebody with a lot of energy, ambition, I wanna move forward, but I'm gonna make my mark here for two or three years, and then I'm gonna go on to something bigger and better. That's who you are, that's not a bad thing, because if you get the right person for two or three years, they could do wonders in a community like Hobbitson, and, and establish themselves as somebody who's a viable candidate. Maybe somebody who'll stay five years, if you get that, that's all good, that's all good, so, um. And, and we just told them that that's who you are, and they couldn't quite understand it, they, they said, why doesn't, why don't people wanna stay here? It's not that they don't wanna stay there, people have ambition and they wanna move on and do other things. And it's not only TAs, by the way, you'll see it in, in finance directors and treasurer's and.
It goes along with the police, uh.
Yeah.
Yeah, all the time.
It's a stepping stone.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah, all the time.
Yeah.
But that's not a bad thing, you, you, you get somebody that's energetic, intelligent, can move, I, I read your goals and the goals for the TA and all that, you got a lot of good stuff going on. You need somebody to manage it and lead, that's what you need, uh, and, and small towns like this, because your TA has to do a lot more than, believe it or not, some TAs in bigger towns. Because you don't have staff.
Mm-hmm.
You don't have a lot of staff, so you better have some knowledge about everything, and tha- that's a great quality to develop in a community like this. But it also helps you, because with that, with those type of skill sets, somebody who's intelligent will pick up, I keep saying this to people, and I shouldn't, Heather, don't say, don't report me to the MMA. The TA job is not rocket science. It's important you know the specifics about how to get things done, but it's not rocket science. Leadership is more important in our mind, somebody who the community can look at, that person, he or she is, is a leader. And there, we, we have faith, we have confidence, that person knows what they're talking about. Um, that to us is, is very important going forward. So, in, in terms of, um, the, the question Heather you asked about the essays, we're open to that. We're, we're open to that, that could compress the schedule a bit.
So another question about compression of the schedule.
Yeah. Yeah.
Um, so in, in the last search you did for Berlin.
Yeah.
And you said you usually use the, leave the windows open for applicants for thirty days. What percentage or how many of those twenty one folks came in with their applications early on, and how many waited to the thirty days?
Mo- majority of them at the end.
Majority at the end.
Majority of them at the end, cause most people are thinking, they see the notice.
Yeah.
Ah, yeah, eh, I'm too busy right now, uh, but I might be interested in that. In a couple of weeks, I'll reassess, and the majority of them come in the end, for whatever reason, sometimes the political climate changes in the community. And somebody thinks, eh, maybe it's about time, you know, I didn't really think of that community, but maybe it's about time, so.
But is it really that they're waiting thirty days, cause they're taking thirty days to think about it, or they're waiting the thirty days to make sure that their piece goes in at the very end? Cause I, I mean, I've talked to a lot of folks in the field, right?
Yeah.
Most of us have a strategy when we apply as to whether it's the first one in the door, or the last one in the door.
Yeah, yeah.
And I assure you, if it's the last one in the door, most of us aren't writing it at midnight the night before, and that's why it's the last one in the door.
Right.
So I'm just wondering, you know, with compression, and again, knowing that even as a candidate, you're always chomping at the bit to move the process.
Yep.
Does it potentially make sense, like, do we need to leave the position open for thirty days, or can we le- you know, do a much shorter, like, twenty one day, or twenty day window, or something? So people can actually have the impression as well that we have our stuff together.
Yep.
And that we're moving, and that the position here, you know, we're not gonna leave it open forever, that we want the right candidate, we want them now.
Yep.
But in the same sense, if I can jump in.
Sure.
If you make it too tight a window, cause he's already indicated, because of the salary wise, it, the pool of applicants is limited. So I mean, if we shorten the amount of time, we may be sho- shooting ourselves in the foot.
Well, the o- the only thing I'll say to, to that point is, lo- look, after three weeks, if we think we've got real quality candidates, we'll start processing, we'll start processing.
So you would recommend it, and that's, if that hap- if it played out properly, yeah.
What'll happen with MMA, or New Hampshire Association, or Vermont, whatever ones we advertise, tha- they, they charge you for thirty days of advertising.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, you, you can, we can accelerate the process if the candidates are coming in early.
Mm-hmm.
And just say, you know, whoever we talk to who's our contact, we'll just say, look, we think we got eight good candidates already, so we're starting to vet them. And we can vet them through the phone discussions and all that kind of stuff, to make sure they're safe.
But to your point on that too, personally, if, i- i- if it was unfolding that, uh, that you didn't have choice candidates.
Yeah.
I would not want you to then take a sh- the shorter time, I would want the thirty days, so that maybe someone better is going to apply. I would want the thirty days so that maybe someone better is going to apply, so like.
Well, to the, to that point, if after, if after three weeks, uh, we don't see the type of candidate we, we wanna see, we do direct solicitation.
Second of course.
We, we call some folks we know that have been in other processes, we will not call anybody who's been a client of ours.
Mm-hmm.
We just don't think that's right and, and fair to the community that previously hired us.
Mm-hmm.
Definitely.
But we know a lot of people and we know a lot of folks that are ready for that step, so i- in terms of Jeff, to your, to your question and Heather's question, after three weeks, if we don't see somebody that we really like, we're gonna do some direct, direct solicitation.
Mm-hmm.
So, um.
So flexibility, I guess would be the word, Heather, to be right, in terms of that.
Yeah.
Well, it's more so, I think, when it's actually advertised, a lot of ways around that, as you say, you know, it's open till filled, but you know, preference is giving to applications received by four P M. on August thirtieth or something of the sort.
Next day.
Yeah. Yeah, and we.
So that we can move and be done the process if we find the right person sooner.
We, we can put that right in the ad, you're right. You can put something, language like that, it still allows you the thirty days, but you can put it, we give preference, preferential treatment to somebody who submits by the twenty-first day, twenty, wha- whatever, but we can, we can design however we wanna put that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that's, those are the only issues in terms of timing, uh, that take time. Um, you know, with the, the meetings with the screening committee, again, we'll have to work through our point of contact here and how we, and, and again, if I have the screening committee numbers, I'll call whoever the chairman is.
Mm-hmm.
We can work from there. Um, but setting up the meetings, making sure people are available to, to come in, and of course you got the candidates too who have variety of schedules that, uh, that we have to accommodate also. Uh, we prefer, I don't know how you guys are moving in that direction, I just saw the most recent Zoom attempt, we prefer in-person interviews.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I think most people we talk to prefer in-person interviews.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And especially with the appointing authority.
Yeah.
Because I don't know about you, but I've hired a lot of people and I like to see them and watch the body language and the eye contact and.
Yeah.
I have no use for it. No use for it at this point, it's my life.
Um, we will also, uh, Jeff and we, we can talk, uh, specifics about the, the contract engagement, I'm, I'm assuming you guys have a standardized contract, you just want us to, I'll send it to Alan and, or do you want our contract and?
Uh, Ryan, you wanna jump in here? Can you answer that in terms of the contract?
He wasn't paying attention. Just kidding.
We woke him up.
Standard contract.
Okay, so you have a standard contract, okay. So we, we can, we can talk.
It's, it's.
You can just send it to, to my boss and we'll get it all signed off and, uh, move, move from there.
I'd really hear it.
Uh, I, I also, one of the things that was intriguing to me is I, I looked at your site and I saw that the community survey, which I thought was interesting. You got some pretty interesting results and a pretty good participation rate for a community. And I thought that was decent.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, you'll be surprised with some of the communities, they get five percent and they're like thrilled, you know? Um, which is interesting and, and I saw the hot buttons, you know, the open space, the rural character and all that kinda stuff, which is important, that's good for us to know.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, because we're gonna be looking for somebody with, with skill sets revolving around that. Um, so we talked about the ad, we talked about, uh, I, I think during the, uh, when we figure out the ad, uh, I'll be talking to you about setting up, uh, sessions here.
Mm-hmm.
Buzz and I will come out for a date.
Okay.
You just give us a couple of rooms, we'll talk individually, not as a group.
Yeah. Okay.
Cause like I told you, it's the appointing authority, uh, we wanna hear exactly what the people are thinking as department managers.
Mm-hmm.
It, it doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't, I don't call you and say, oh my god, you should have heard what you did. But it's good for us to know that. So we prep the candidates and say, what's going on and, uh, you know, and they'll find out themselves, I mean, you know, you, you you get, you don't wanna be blindsided, you don't want anybody to be blindsided coming in.
Right.
Most people can handle the situation, they just don't wanna be surprised, like you don't.
Uh, in terms of the, uh, schedule.
Yep.
Of, we, is this a joint thing, or is this something that we shouldn't be setting up on our own and then say, this is what we want, but as far as the search, the sca- schedule for the whole process, what we would like to try to?
The. I'm gonna set up the schedule and I'll send it to you with dates.
Okay.
And, and, and weeks that we have available to meet and those type of things.
Fine. Okay.
And you can share it with the search committee and stuff, but we will do that, we'll set up, based on the discussion we're having now, looks like we'll gain a couple of weeks if, if, uh,
Mm-hmm.
anyway, I just gotta think about it and then put it on paper so that you all have.
Uh, it's good to know, I appreciate that, okay.
Yeah.
Bob, I have a question.
Yep.
So the search committee, as of yet, has not met, so they haven't, um, appointed a chair or anything like that.
Okay.
Should I prompt them or somebody prompt them to set up a meeting to establish that before, yes?
What, what I would suggest is you prompt them to meet and we'll come. We'll come and meet with them. So we'll outline what we just talked to you about, so they have the same idea as to what the schedule is, what your desires are
Okay.
to accelerate the schedule, we'll reinforce that.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
So you just let me know when, uh,
Okay.
when you can set that up with the screening committee.
Okay, all right.
And we'll, we'll come out.
So Bob, what information do you need from us tonight to keep going? So I know we talked a little bit about processing of, of the timeline and one of the things you had mentioned was
Yep.
what our take was on what we wanted to see you guys do as far as the advertisement goes.
Yep.
Whether we wanted the screening committee to be involved or whether we just wanted
Yep.
you to take, you know, the standard information, it's usually like a couple paragraphs, very brief, the same information regardless of what you're doing, no one gets creative on these things unfortunately.
Yep.
Um, and send it to us all to make sure everyone's on the same page and then you move forward.
Typically, we'll send the ad to Ryan.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And to you. And just, you know, don't, don't quibble about it, if you, you, you wanna editorialize and give us a little latitude there, we, we, we don't reinvent the wheel. You've seen all these advertisements, they're all pretty similar. The caveat to that is what you mentioned and that is maybe put some language that will give preference to uh, folks who apply by whatever the date is.
Mm-hmm.
Within twenty-one days or so, but we can do that.
Mm-hmm.
But your mission, uh, is to figure out what you wanna pay.
Mm-hmm.
That's what you, you need to decide. Because as soon as we get that, we'll, we'll put the document together and just get it off to you.
So is that something you need from us or we should perhaps, I don't know if we should have a conversation this evening about that? I, I'm just, I'm just thinking, you know, every time we hold off, we're waiting two weeks.
Yeah, it's, it's extending, yeah.
That's, yeah, that, that's.
And so if we can come to some consensus, um, this evening, I mean, even in some of them, I believe they say, you know, what the baseline is and oftentimes it says, or sometimes it say salaries negotiable.
Negotiable, yeah.
Yeah.
Some of the towns that really struggle with hiring actually eventually forego listing the salary altogether, cause they get frustrated, cause people look at the number and they run away screaming the other way.
That's why, that's why we suggest a range, be- because the op- opposite of that, uh, what you're talking about Heather, is that if some of the candidates don't see a salary, there's I don't even, what are they gonna pay, fifty grand?
Yeah.
You know?
Mm-hmm.
So it's a double-edged sword.
Okay.
You know, if you put something that, that you think is competitive and Heather, you know, cause you're in a relatively small place and, um, there, we, we can get comps. And I know you, you probably know the comps.
Oh, yeah. It's good.
So you, you should talk about that, Jeff, you should talk about that, cause that, the key is getting the ad in.
It's it's not one thing to have, huh?
Okay. Yeah. Sure.
Once we get the ad in, the process starts.
Yeah. So have you seen any of them recently that say, you know, a hundred and salaries, you know, base a hundred and ten negotiable with experience and education or something, so I'm, I'm just thinking of what language gets us in the door, so we can get this thing out ASAP.
Yep. Yep.
And then we can figure out, cause we have to look at our numbers, we have to talk to Ryan, we have to see how much flex is in the budget, we have to see what happens with special town meeting with the school and to, like,
Right.
we got lots of moving factors.
We're broke, yep, yep.
So is that something we can do, Bob? Can we, can we do that? Can we agree this evening to say, you know, that we're gonna use a standard lang- standard language that says, you know, the pay is whatever it's currently set in the budget, you know, but negotiable?
Yeah, yeah, yep.
I don't have a problem with what he, with what Ryan makes right now. Um, being in there with a little bit of flexibility, you know, five above, five below, whatever, you know what I mean? But, yeah, the special town meeting is gonna be in a few weeks and that could totally screw us one way or the other. Um, well, screw us in one way and help us if it stays stagnant, um.
I have, if I can jump in, I've had this talk with Ryan on, on the, on this, okay?
Yeah, feel free.
In terms of what he thought would be something that would work, that would get, that we would be able to get applicants and he just threw it out to, to me and he was basically said like, one-ten, one-fifteen, one-twenty, and then two percent from that point on. This is what he was suggesting that he thought would be a fair thing. So is that okay if I share that, Ryan?
Too late, you just did.
So.
Well, you gotta have a.
Yeah. Ryan's like, the cat's out of the bag now.
You gotta have the baseline, so you gotta start somewhere, so, I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that, that was something he just mentioned that he thought would be a starter for us, but.
I don't, I don't know what he makes right now, but I know it's right around, I don't know, what, it is what it is, but you gotta have a low, you gotta start.
He had to work up to where he is now.
Of course, he, he's put in three, uh, what, four years?
Yeah, yeah. Yep, yep.
Four years, you know, he earned, earned that to where he's at now.
Yeah. Which is how he presented that, one-ten, one-fifteen, one-twenty, and then two percent from that point on, yeah.
Right, so the five, you mean like starting salary one-ten and then the next contract year is one-fifteen?
And then five, yeah, each year five.
And then, really?
To one-twenty and then two percent, that's.
I wouldn't put that in the, in the ad.
No.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, that's what he shared.
No.
Because that's up to you to decide what that second year salary is gonna be.
Yeah, but.
Well, he didn't start.
Right.
And I'm not sug- suggesting that that has to be it, but I'm just throwing numbers out because you tell us throwing them out, okay?
So you, you put it. Yes.
No, no, so you put it in base, it all, it, that's, uh, with a neg- negotiable contract.
Well, that's the whole thing, cause you, the, like, what Ryan was when he came here, he, you were what, veterans agent?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so he wasn't a town administrator.
Right, right.
And that's most likely what we're going to attract, is somebody that wants to get into TA field.
Yeah.
And they're gonna be here for like three to maybe six years if we're freaking lucky.
I agree.
Which is fine.
Yep, yep.
And they're gonna move on, you know, and
Yeah.
I'm fine with giving somebody a chance and a risk, you know, if, if it's the right person that's motivated, goal-oriented.
Yeah, me too. He was a chance and a risk, that's what we got, you know what I mean?
Yeah, exactly. Exactly, yeah.
So that's what we're looking for, is another Ryan.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, they're not gonna.
You're not gonna, you're not gonna get the exact same Ryan, but you gotta get somebody probably as qualified, you know, it, it all depends.
No, yeah.
You don't know what you're gonna get, you won't know till you get the, the applicant.
Yeah.
I love these, I love these discussions because way back when, I won't tell you how long, I was the first administrative assistant in Maynard. I had no experience.
None.
They hired me, took a chance.
Yeah.
And within two years, Burlington hired me as their town administrator.
Yeah.
Two years' experience in Maynard.
Yeah.
With no previous experience.
Yeah.
So the, the point is, and I think you touched on it, Kay, Kat, Katie, uh, somebody, somebody who's energetic, who, who's aggressive, who wants to do a good job here, they're valuable people and there are, there are people out there who want that, give me a chance, give me my first step. Because we all start somewhere.
Yeah.
You know?
And there's a lot of people out there, they're not all about salary also.
I agree.
They need that foot in the door, and, and it, salary can come down the road.
Yeah.
But you get the foot in the door, they get established, now you see what you have.
Yeah. Yep.
Now you can go for the money.
Yep. Yep.
That's the way it works, right?
Yep. Yep.
So we all good with the one-ten negotiable and language for Bob to tweak out?
Yeah, yeah.
Good start, yeah.
We'll do that, we'll send it to you, um, so Heather, you asked about takeaways, so we, we've gotta talk, uh, tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, about the search committee and about names, well, I guess that's up to you, or leave it with Ryan, uh, who do you want us to talk to?
Yeah. So I have a question here and I think it's an important one. So Sandy, you're gonna be gracing us with your presence here as the interim.
Yes, you lucky ducks.
I, we are, we are very lucky and fortunate to have you, but the question I have is whether or not you have any interest in keeping in the back of your mind a potential to actually apply for the full-time position.
Right.
Because if you did, then we need to modify a little bit about how we're gonna navigate this.
That's what I've been debating.
And you don't have to decide now, but if there's any answer other than absolutely not, then what we should do, I think, is remove you from it, so you stay neutral.
Mm-hmm.
And move things over to Tony as the interactive person for Bob. Um, so that he has someone to go to, I mean, we could say Ryan, but Ryan's, your, your days are getting shorter here, so you may not be here when we get into that part of this.
He's, he's talking, hold on. Yes, yeah, go ahead.
So I, I don't think I would be comfortable answering that if I was Sandy, so I, I would say that you should just go ahead and not have her be part of that process, so she can make a reasonable decision.
Mm-hmm.
And have Tony be the point of contact and then whoever selected us to chair, so if that's working with Bob, we start at the consultant, so, um, let her experience the job before she makes that call, but take it out of her hands by twenty somewhere else.
Agreed.
Maybe Tony wants the job.
Well, now we're now we're down the opposite.
That was like crap, look at him, look at his face.
Well, it looks like you're talking to Jeff.
He's like, ah.
Jeff just picked up a full-time volunteer.
Put it back on, I'll show Helen.
Yeah.
I'll hand, talking to me tomorrow.
Or, yeah, like I said, worse comes to worse, I'll be up for your contact, I don't care. I have no interest in being the TA.
Well, you guys can figure that out, I don't need to be involved in that, I'll work with whoever it is and then of course the chair, whoever the chair is of the search committee.
Zero.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think we'll be fine.
So is it feasible, Bob, that you have what you ha- need from us and that you would be able to proceed with meeting with the search committee next week?
Yeah, yeah.
And then starting to get going on the, um, the community profile?
Yep.
And we don't need to meet to approve that, we can do the same thing, right?
Well, that's up to you. That's one of the things that can delay the process. If you wanna edit it, you know, we, we, we generally run it by your TA. Because the TA generally knows all the facts and, you know, the budget and all that kinda stuff. That's what we generally run it by.
That's fine, that's fine, yeah.
Um, so we can, we can do that, but to your question, yes, we start that process pretty quickly.
Okay.
But, but we can't do the ideal profile, uh, of the candidate unless we talk to you folks too, so there's gonna be, it's gonna be accelerated over the next couple of weeks.
Sure. Sure.
If you don't want me.
Bring it on, just get it done, gotta get it done.
Yep, yes, I'm, I'm very available.
So, so Sandy, Tony, Peter, whoever, we need, we need names, numbers of, uh, all of, we got a list, the select board members.
Okay.
We'll get to you now, I think we have at least one.
Uh, and whoever, and that's the question I asked earlier, whoever you want us to talk to, I, we, we always suggest, talk to the police, the fire, public works, the big ones.
Yep. D P W.
Yeah.
Some want us to talk to the schools, some don't. Uh, that's your call, it doesn't matter to us, either way.
You have a, you have a school committee member on the screening committee.
We member on it, yes, yeah.
Okay, that'll do it, that'll do it. Uh, some communities want us to talk to the moderators, the moderator, cause the moderators in most communities really have a pretty good understanding, they run your town meetings and
Mm-hmm.
blah, 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 but that's your call.
I.
Planning board chair, finance committee for sure, chair.
Yep.
Well, you have your finance committee chairs on the search committee.
She's on there.
She's on, okay, that's good, fine.
Yeah.
We have a planning board representative.
Also on the committee.
On the search committee, so you.
That's all good.
Yeah.
So we'll talk to them.
We tried to represent those important aspects early on.
Yep.
We try to represent all the boards with the search committee.
Um, so if.
D P W director, um, which is something I wanted to run by you is because I'm now gonna be the interim.
Is gonna. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Um, Ryan suggested I not be on the committee.
This is an item we have today.
Yeah, yeah.
And put, if, if Travis wants it, put him on.
Um, so.
Travis.
I have talked to Travis and he's agreed to be on the committee, so he would be the D P W director.
Right.
That's coming up later on tonight.
Yeah, I saw that, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
Yeah.
Um.
It's a pretty roundabout.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's good, yeah, Brian told me that you guys really did some thi- thinking about that and who to put on it and
Mm-hmm.
And like you said, Jeff, you've already talked to him about being available, so that's, that's all good, that helps speed the process up, so.
Yeah.
So Bob, based on, um, this overwhelming amount of information we've given you feedback on already, what do you think the realistic timeframe is that we would have the job posted and, uh, the community profile ready to roll?
Well, I think we could do, we can, what, what's today?
Today's the first, August.
Yeah, today's the first. Uh, we could probably have an ad by the end of the week, so you can to- look at that.
Awesome. Get it done.
Um, and we can, we can get it in, uh, as quickly as we can, you know, some of these venues are a little difficult. MMA is pretty easy, but, you know, some of them are, oh, well, we can't put that, post that today, we'll have to wait till Wednesday, you know, that type of stuff.
Yeah. Yeah.
But, so, let's, uh, let's target this week for the ad.
Sounds good.
Okay? And you said, um, the board said, uh, one-ten plus or one-ten negotiable?
I think it's one-ten negotiable.
Negotiable. One-ten negotiable. Okay.
Well, the one-ten is the base, it's, the other end of the contract is negotiable, right?
Yep.
Isn't that what we're planning on?
Let's just put one-ten negotiable.
Yeah, one-ten negotiable.
Hmm, and then we can negotiate what that means, Peter.
I, I.
Yes, depending, depending, depending on the applicant, yes.
Yeah.
We can.
For me, it'll need to be wide open, does it not? Yeah. Yeah.
Jump, let me jump in for me, cause we have a ton of stuff that we have to get to, so.
Yep.
Um, is there anything we haven't told you or any other question?
No, you've given me some good information and I'll get, I'll get the rest of the information as we talk with the, the names of the people and all that kinda stuff.
Okay.
Uh, the only thing for next week, for either Tony, next Wednesday, uh, both Buzz and I are down in Somerset for final interviews.
Okay.
Uh, so that's the only night we're not at, but we're around and, uh.
Okay.
Uh, so that's the only night we're not at, but we're around, and, uh, the other ones in talking to department heads, that'll be during the day, so we're around.
Okay.
Any of the days, and typically the town will set it up for one day, and as I said, they'll give us each a room, Buzz and I, and we'll talk individually with every, and you could, you, we generally ask you to schedule it.
Mm-hmm.
And it's generally thirty, forty minutes with each person, and we we just go one to the other, and we do, we get it all out in one day.
Okay. Okay. Okay.
And to the question earlier, that's gonna help us develop a profile, develop the challenge statement, um, and that's why we're gonna wanna talk to you folks also, what are the challenges you see? I know money, you guys have mentioned that, but there were other things, and I, I heard the rumbling about the special town meeting, and anyway, so we'll talk about that.
Yeah, that's. Yes, there is.
Yeah, I I know all the. I know all the challenges.
Yeah.
Hey, well, thank you all very much.
Thank you, guys, we look forward to it, we'll get you somebody, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Um, as the, as Billin told us the other day, get us, get us Margaret squared, and and I'm I'm not gonna get your Ryan squared, but, you know, thank.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, good luck tonight.
Thank you very much, nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Thank you, oh, we're we're not done talking to you guys.
Well, no, we'll see you soon, I'm just trying to be cordial.
All right, so here's the biggest question, so if I go out here sixty-eight north, does that take me right to four ninety-five?
No. Uh.
Route two.
Route two.
Uh, I I'm sorry, route two, does it take me right to?
Yeah, route two. Yeah, sixty-eight all the way.
All the way.
Yeah, to route two.
Okay, cause I came into that, I used ways and they took me in through one four, anyway.
And then. Well, you don't give him the back.
Westminster.
Where are you headed, to North to South?
One left-hand turn here.
Low, a long. Two to forty-five.
It's only seven miles.
Yeah, so take a left down at the park.
Take a left, thank you, thanks again, forty minutes left.
Thirty-five.
Keep going straight.
Go straight, thank you.
Get to the Rotary.
All right, let's hit it.
Okay, um, I had to shut it down, cause it was supposed to be thirty minutes, and we've taken off an hour, and we got a key key issue is the school committee.
You did good. Yeah.
We got all. All night.
And the budget, so, um, the next item, but I think we should put them together, two and three, the budget, the special town meeting, closing the warrant, reviewing the warrant, and making any recommendations, but if we have any recommendations, for example, we need to decide the issue on the, uh, how, position we're gonna take pertaining to the school committee. Um, so I think we should deal with that first, as Ryan recommended that we do.
The special town meeting.
In terms of, in terms of the, uh, budget, as he put it, is a lingering question, do we wanna open up the budget to town meeting voters by placing the general budget on the warrant? His immediate recommendation is yes, cause it's transparent, but he worries that people then could suggest adjusting line items in the regular budget that's already been passed at the town meeting. So his suggestion is, we, which is what we're gonna do right now, is to vote on the school committee budget first, because it's a standalone thing, uh, from the QRSD budget. And this, this will have a presentation, then on an up and down vote, et cetera, and how in common we would be recommending it. As I recall from our last meeting, and correct me if I'm mistaken on this, but we've got three options that we can kick around, and we need to decide on one. We can do nothing about it totally, and it becomes, it'll pass just immediately, in other words, if we make no statement, we don't pass it, it automatically will take, take hold, we can vote it down and s- and send back a statement, as I think Heather was, uh, mentioning, uh, last week, saying that we're not taking what they want us to have right now, and make a statement about how we feel about it, and then I had brought up something that Ryan had mentioned to me, as a, he recommended might be a si- a show of good faith, should this thing go to the state level, is to take the forty K, uh, revenue and put it on the original assessment, and by based on, based on that, ba- basically then we would be saying this group, you know, this is what we're willing, and we can still make a statement, strong statement, that's it for us, we can't afford anything else, so I think these are the three things that we kicked around last week, and if you agree with that, then we've gotta come up with one of them that we as a board w- want to, uh, vote on up or down, because it has to be done before the s- special meeting and be for the warrant. So I'll throw it out to anybody to start ki- kicking it around.
I'll start, I I say we take whatever money we can find, which is another forty K, and tell them, this is, this is, it's not our last offer, but this is what we can afford without dipping into, um, cutting back services.
So you're saying the forty K on the original assessment?
Right.
Yes, and this is what we can afford, and now we're gonna get into cutting back services, if we have to pay more, I mean,
Okay, uh-huh.
it's all we can afford, that's, we're not hiding any money anywhere, this is what we have, now, and the only way to increase that is to
Yeah.
cut services, yeah, but they don't really care, you know they don't care about cutting services, so, um, but I I don't know, I, anybody else?
Cause Ryan even pointed this out, uh, on one of our other, um, meetings, if, for example, we agreed to the hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars,
That's my feeling.
he listed where the cuts would have to be, and it it's, it would really tear us apart.
Yeah, it's terrible, so, so, I mean, that's my personal feeling, I mean, I'd really rather just say, uh, see you later.
So, uh.
Uh, but I say, you know, we find all the money we can find, which Ryan's already done, increase what the number we had that by that forty thousand, and say, this this is it, we're tapped, we're tapped out. This is what we have to offer you, and if it's not good enough, well, then they have to go to state, and it is what it is.
True.
That's my feeling.
I'm I'm still at a no for changing anything, um, I think I articulated last week that I felt that the decrease in the overall assessment by approximately a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, which just happened to be right around the same amount of money that was anticipated by the increase in revenue by the governor's FY twenty-three budget, which he has now signed, um, was bad faith, uh, I felt that the towns in saying no said we cannot afford this, we're not just voting this one time, we're voting the budget for every year a- after this, because this becomes the base.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So this adds their base number, and then their two percent increase on that is two percent on the larger number.
Right.
So not only can we not swallow it this year and be able to afford it, we're definitely not gonna be able to afford it next year, and in three years from now, it's gonna be even worse, and we can't afford it.
Right.
Not only that, but we have other communities in our district that cannot survive with these amounts of increases, and we need to start sticking together.
Right.
So we talked about it last week, I think it's, we've talked about it the weeks before that, that it's extremely important for us to make a statement and say, listen,
Yeah.
even if we could afford a few more dollars, our counterparts can't, this is not fair to them, and we would hope that we if we were in the situation where we're, you know, sitting there belly up because of five more dollars or, you know, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars more, that the other communities will come to our aid and say, listen, we can't do this anymore, this isn't working. So I'm at no for making any changes.
Okay, okay.
I get the good faith effort, and I I understand that, but I definitely see the problem of the long term. So I'm gonna go with Heather of, we gotta stick with this, because the long term is not gonna work. That base is getting way too high, and we will, we're gonna have to start raising taxes, we're gonna have to do both, not only raise taxes, we're gonna have to cut our services.
Services.
We're gonna have to do both, within a couple of years, if this, if we have to keep going up like this, this is unsustainable for our town, yes.
So. Can I jump in one second?
Mm-hmm.
So, you you're saying is, with what the state just gave them, you'll, they'll raise that base to that for our future, possibly.
So I guess what I'm saying, so remember, they just reduced their assessment, so they said, congratulations, five towns, we're gonna reduce.
Yes. Well, they didn't, they only reduced it because of money they got from the state, they didn't take anything out of the original proposal, so, so they didn't do anything of good faith.
Yes. Correct, they didn't change anything.
Mm-hmm.
No, they didn't, we said we can't afford this, and they said, okay, well, the state's gonna give us more money, so we'll charge you less.
Right. Yeah. Yeah. But they didn't downgrade the original amount.
Correct, so instead of it being eight point something percent increase, I don't know, Ryan, what did it work out to, six or seven?
Yeah.
I think it's seven point four three.
Seven point four three, Ryan, does that sound right?
Yeah.
Our share, Hubbardson's share.
Good. Our share, so Hubbardson's share was only seven point four three percent over last year's number.
Mm-hmm.
They originally asked for twelve percent.
Yes, and it worked its way down, but again, that huge number, I mean, for us, we only really go up by two and a half percent every year, you know, with taxes.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah.
Right.
We don't have a lot of place to go, to go seven and a half percent, and you could say it's this one year, what have you, but next year's not gonna be zero percent to offset it.
Right. That's like, that's like three years of changes in one year.
Exactly, that's, that's what I'm saying, this is very unsustainable.
Nine or years.
Yeah, okay.
And then even another forty thousand on top of what we already have makes it untenable for the future years, and we're at, what, seventy percent for the school budget?
Yeah, yeah, I wasn't thinking of that. Yeah.
Seventy percent, if you look at the majority of other towns, they're fifty percent, fifty percent school, fifty percent general services, fifty percent school, fifty percent general services, maybe slightly more. Not seventy, thirty, that's insane.
How long has this ta- town been operating with a school budget up around seventy percent, does anybody have that answer?
Quite wonderful.
Ryan? Do you know?
I'm, I can only speak to my four years, it's, so the, the seventy number would be if this number passed, so it's been closer to sixty historically, and, um, the the reason why the seventy number is sticking this year is because we're dedicating in the last, so of the budget in June, seventy percent of due revenue. And it's also important to note that Hubbardson will never see the assessment under three and a half percent, so if Robin went up zero dollars, Hubbardson would still go up three point five percent because of the state formula, which is something the school talks about a lot, so we're never gonna see a two or a three again, unless you have a one-time revenue year like like COVID, so we're not wishing that on anybody, um, so that, that base next year, even with a zero percent increase, it would be three point five on top of it.
So they already know they're getting money for the years even out, for the new budgets are even out, they already know, they already know they're getting an automatic raise.
So, yeah, and that's. Well, they, yeah, that's.
Yeah.
It's, and I get that the school has special ed they have to meet, and they have their side they have to meet, but I have to sit here on the select board, and I have to make decisions for the town Hubbardston.
Correct.
I have kids in the school system, and I understand what the school goes through and what they have on their end, cause I do have kids that have been through the special education program, and I get it, there's no winning anywhere in this, there's no winning for the school, there's no winning for the select board, there's no winning for the town. This whole system is screwed up, and I, it is the state's fault, it is, you know, the way that they do it, and the way they flipped it
Formal, yeah.
onto the schools, the way the schools, you know, onto the towns, onto, it's all a big mess, and I get where the school is coming from, and I know a lot of people are like, you know, the school needs an audit, and an ENEMA, and a this, and a that, and, no, I've seen it all, trust me, read Facebook, um, and I'm not trying to make light of that, I just, I just, I get, people are, and then you have a lot of teachers in town too that are like, you don't understand, and I see both sides, but right now, I'm sitting right here, looking at these numbers, long term, trying to figure it out for our town to work by supporting the school and our town, it's not, there's no, there's no win, there's no answer, there's no way to make this work, something's gotta give.
Yeah.
And I'm at the point where we have to, that, we can't this year, cause it's just gonna screw us completely for future.
Yeah, 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 no, I hear you.
So there's no winning.
Yeah. Yeah, the school department, I think, should be starting at a baseline for each community, what can that community afford, and kill their budget from that.
I don't think they care. I don't think they care.
Oh, they don't, I'm saying, they should.
Yeah, they should, but we know they don't care, and we know they're not.
This is what, you know. As opposed to it comes down from them, and all of a sudden, we can't afford this, yeah.
I don't think they're forthcoming with their numbers either, I think there's some wiggle room there, and they just don't show it, I really do.
Yeah. Uh, Ryan, if I could ask you a question, uh, because, uh, in terms of what Heather is suggesting, my only question is if all of a sudden we end up being the only town, uh, and the position we've taken, then we're gonna be hit even worse with cuts be- because it will then be automatically passed.
Then we have to go back to town meeting.
It, it doesn't matter, Jeff, you're gonna have to go back to town meeting to cut anyway, so it's, uh.
Either way.
Having another town meeting.
Yeah, cause New Braintree and how, they're having, they're town meeting on the same day we are.
Yeah.
Like tonight?
No, it's next Wednesday, twenty-second, all right, well, it doesn't matter, okay, well then, um.
No.
Oh, you mean next Wednesday?
Yeah.
Yeah. And they're kinda, they're in the same boat we are, obviously.
Well, New Braintree for sure, they don't have anything.
Well then.
Yeah, yeah.
I think Ryan was trying to.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hardwick and New Braintree are both having their town meeting the same night, we, so all three are gonna be on the same night.
Yeah, I was just mentioning that, yeah. So most likely, it, it's gonna get turned down, turned down by a- another community besides ourselves. I'm as- assuming this is what we're saying as a board, you know, we're turning it down, okay?
Mm-hmm.
In which case, in which case it goes back to the drawing board again, then the next tier up, though, if it gets turned down again, goes to the state.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Is that my understanding correct?
So Jeff, process-wise?
Yeah.
Would be, it would be enough time for the school committee to consider the budget again, if the town voted to, two of the towns voted three to vote the budget down, there would be enough time, but it's really, really close to December first, cause you need, um, the thirty and then the forty-five days.
Yeah.
You're, you're looking at, we're gonna have a town meeting, according to the board, around that time anyway, early November, so it's actually gonna time, you know, we're gonna time to have that, that meeting again, it's whether or not the school committee reconsidered the budget, and then, uh, whatever act happens there, you have the December first, and then the state will decide the budget, so the, the commissioner of education literally grabs the budget from both the town and the school, and they decide the level of education for the community, which in my opinion is the worst-case outcome, because the community should decide their own, uh, level of service, not not the state, so.
Yep.
Agree. Agree.
Okay, well, I'll just throw this out, it is, if there's no more discussion, I, I'll entertain a motion, uh, Heather, if you want, if I.
I think Mike's gonna comment.
Oh, real, real quick, uh, Mike Stoff, five Lombard Road, I think I recall from last select board meeting that there was gonna be contact with, uh, Hardwick and get some input from them, is that correct, do I remember correctly? And if so, I think there was even a motion, and if so, what is the feedback from that contact?
I don't recall.
I believe, um, Ryan, if I have this correct, my understanding is you've made, uh, you've made contact with both of those towns, and they are working to set up a, um, meeting with just a representative or two from each of the towns in order to have a conversation, is that correct?
Yeah, so nailing down a full three board or six boards, you're trying to meet meeting is going to be impossible in two weeks.
This would be the time to ask, is it Wednesday, Thursday?
So we're trying to get a Zoom together so that at least the, uh, re- reps from each board can discuss the budget, I don't want it to be for any of the towns, but they're, they're having the same conversations you are about affordability and, uh, you know, future budgets, so.
And to that point, uh, Ryan, is that meeting this Thursday the fourth or Wednesday, cause Heather was curious?
Still, still trying to get everyone in the same room, so.
Okay.
Oh, still to be determined, okay, thank you, all right.
I can't make the sense of, you know, Tom can't do it when Tom can, so I'm trying, I'm trying to coordinate it, just do a couple more days.
Okay.
So yes, Ryan's working on it, Mike.
So, thank, thank you, I got, I got the answer, thank you.
So once again, I'd be happy to entertain a motion if you wanna make it.
So just a clarification, cause I don't have the doc in front of me, so the warrant article for the amount, is it currently written as the same amount we previously had?
Yes.
Okay, and Jeff, I know earlier you had mentioned whether or not we wanted to put on a, um, open up the town's budget as well, or if we did not, I don't think we covered that piece.
Um, I don't.
In discussion, you said that one of the options.
They, if we do nothing, I I don't believe we have to, uh, deal with that at all, um, but.
Okay.
So Jeff, the downside of that, the downside of not putting the, the, the rest of the budget on, is if the town decides to fund the school committee's request, there will be no ability to change the budget, uh.
Okay.
Which would require another meeting, and I I don't know if that would be, we have nothing, now, in number one, so.
Uh-oh.
Bugging.
Complicated.
Yeah, so.
So then I just, I just think we can open up the budget, it's more, the, the town deliberated on this budget and passed this budget, the only thing that's still in contention is the school budget. So I always believe that the town should, should revisit the budget and then have the, the transparency of looking at it, however, uh, given the budget constraints and, and all the different variations and the lack of ability for us to prepare for, say, someone to change another part of the budget, it would be a little unfair to all the other departments that, that plan, so it's a highly vetted process, it's already been through, it's gonna be still with this one part of the budget that is the driver of the rest.
So Ryan, question, so, no, so hypo. So Ryan, question. So, no, so hypothetically, right? If we just put on this article just for the school budget and let's say it, you know, it doesn't pass or the number increases or whatever, then we have an out of whack operating budget. Can we go back, if we have time to go back and open that up before December first, don't we?
Yes, so it turned out with you, you know, I think you would have to have some type of appropriation meeting, which hopefully would have to be amended to include uh reserves or pre-cash. And then that would be catastrophic, so we would have to amend that again before the tax rate is done.
Okay. So you're saying by not, if I'm understanding you correctly, you're saying by not putting the general budget on this as well, we open it up potentially to control of taking money from reserves in order to balance it if that were to move forward from the perspective of the townspeople?
Yes, and then the, I'm, I'm trying not to overcomplicate it. The downside is, that sounds easy, right?
Right.
So we have this reserve of money to solve this problem, but it really creates a huge long-term problem. And I don't know that that would be transparent without the rest of the budget, so, um, if you, if there's nothing to cut, you're just like, let's use the reserves. And that might seem like a viable option to get people out of this room, but it's really not long-term for the town. And hard to see without the rest of the numbers. So I don't wanna complicate it. It's up to the board, but this is all the different consequences of, of the warrant.
I think we need to have the warrant on there as Article Two. If nothing changes, we can always bypass it, right?
Right, you can just skip Article Three.
We can, yeah, and then go to Article Three.
Being the general budget.
Cause there's no need for Article Two if Article One passes as is.
The general budget.
Right.
Right.
So I think it needs to stay on there just in case of catastrophic. You know what I mean? Something happens catastrophic on the floor, but
Oh, primary.
if, if Article One passes as is, then we skip Article Two, cause there's no need to deal with that and move to Article Three.
Can we put, can we put that as part of the explanation under Article Two then, Ryan? That, you know, Article Two is simply here in the event that there's a, um, amended motion to modify Article One and have to, um, balance the budget or something to that like? So people know we're, we're not diving back in. This is only there just in case we need it.
Well. I'll write the different, whatever you want.
Susan has a question.
What if I want you to write it and not draft it myself?
I'll write whatever you want.
Okay.
Okay, Susan Ha- Rain has a question, so.
I can't read it, so.
Why would we not have another town meeting if Article One fails?
What is this, what is that, why are we even having this?
So Article. I think Article One is for the same amount of money as what we already have. I don't think it's so much if it fails. I mean, if, I think it's more the concern that someone can modify an article on the floor, right? So if I'm a school committee member, one of my tactics is gonna be similar to the last meeting. I'm gonna go up and I'm gonna say, I'd like to amend the motion, Mister Moderator. The moder- the motion's going to be blah, 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 the amount that was actually um assessed to the town, which is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars more. And then the other school committee member is going to second it. And then there's gonna be amended motion on the floor. However, the question's ain't gonna be, okay, where are you gonna take that money from?
Right.
So I think that's why he wanted to open up the, if I'm, if I'm correct on this, Ryan, I think that's why he wanted to put the possibility of opening up the general budget, because if you're gonna take money for the school, then you're gonna have to take money from somewhere to give it to the school.
Mm-hmm.
And it's not just as simple as passing or failing the motion. It's the ability for someone to amend the motion on the floor that opens up the need to have Article Two? Okay, she said.
Yeah, and, you know, Susan brings up the counterargument, I think, I think both are valid. Um,
Can't.
you're gonna have to deal with it anyway. Why not, it always looks like, have another town meeting. Consequently, you have another town meeting, it's confusing. Um, but I, you know, I really go either way. It depends on what we want to talk about that night.
So if we waited, so let's say that happens. Let's say the scenario happens. I'm school committee member one, I make the motion, school committee two makes the, um, makes the second and uh they are more persuasive than the select board and they get a favorable vote on their side. Now we have an out of whack budget. To Susan's point then, can we convene, can we, um, uh, close the meeting and re-adjourn at our next meeting and balance the budget at that point? So can we leave an unbalanced budget for a month or two?
We chat.
Right. Cause I mean, to you, to your point earlier, and I, I, I agree with your concern over, you know, not, yes, it's transparent, but it also might confuse people and also might open it up so that it's, um, it's hunting season on the different departments and, you know, it, it also already had been voted by the townspeople. So I think if we were gonna open it back up, we'd wanna, you know, advertise that that's really what's happening more than just trying to go back and rectify the school.
Hmm.
Ah, Susan's listening in real time.
Yes.
Hunting season, precisely.
Hunting season.
Hmm. Okay.
I can't read what she's saying, myself.
So. So.
She said it's definitely hunting season.
Yeah.
Okay.
So that being said, Mister Moderator, or Mister Moderator, see, I'm already right. Uh, Mister Chairman, would you entertain a motion?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we close and approve the warrant as written as far as Article One and only Article One goes.
I'll second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Okay, uh, would you read the motion please, so, and then we'll vote on it?
Do you want me to read it?
I got it. To see if the town will vote to raise the appropriate or transfer from available funds, the sum of
Yeah, okay.
five million, two hundred forty-one dol- uh, two hundred forty-one thousand, six hundred forty-nine dollars to pay its share of Quabin Regional School District budget for FY twenty thr- uh, twenty twenty-three or take any action uh relative there, there too, excuse me.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, can I amend my motion to include Article Three?
Alright.
So I skipped, so I, the intent was Article One for the school and Article Three is a prior year bill. I missed that.
Yes, I was, I was still second that. And Article Three is to see if the town will vote to up.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Heather, before you, before you read that, so the intent of Article Three is to pay a prior year bill, but we need to use the PEG revolving fund reserve. So there's a question with council as to the exact language. So if you could vote on recommending that we pay this past year bill using the PEG reserve fund pending legal review, I would appreciate it.
Do you like me to modify my, uh, amend my motion, Mister Chairman?
Yes.
And then we'll reread it again.
So I will amend my motion to close the special town meeting warrant for August twenty-second special town meeting with the following two articles. Article One, as pertains to the school, and Article Three, as pertains to the payment of a prior year bill, provided that legal counsel approves any amended language or pending approval of amended language by legal counsel relative to the PEG access account.
I'll second it.
Pending review.
Yes, pending review. When it does.
Does that work, Ryan?
Tony, did you get it?
Write, write that one down, Tony.
I'm thankful they're vi- they're videoing it, that's fine.
Okay. Alright, let's, um, please, uh, read the motion now as we tend to understand it. Go ahead.
Uh, I'll do the best I can. I'll try to repeat that again. Uh, my motion was to close the warrant for the August twenty-second special town meeting, um, with regards to Articles One for the school and Article Three for the prior year appropriation, provided that the PEG access funding source is pending legal review and authorize Ryan to make any amendments to that article when he hears back in council. That's the best I could do, Jeff.
Second. It's good. It's good.
I, I didn't write that one down, I'm so sorry.
You're a better man than I am, Ganga. Alright, motion has been made and seconded.
Seconded like three times.
Okay, once again, we'll ask, is there any discussion, any questions, Peter? Yep.
Um, so, this is, the town already voted on this something, correct? The five million, two hundred and one thousand, okay.
Correct.
From the budget, yeah, and, yeah, check.
We're just reading.
That's, that's all I had to s- ask.
Okay, no more discussion, alright. We'll take a vote by, uh, name. Peter, on the motion?
Oh, can you go to somebody else?
Oh, someone else? Katie?
Yes.
Heather?
Hi.
Peter?
Yes.
And yes for me. Motion is passed.
There you go.
I'm a rookie, so.
That's okay, just say I or.
Okay.
Do you want a motion?
No one opposed, didn't, no one opposed, obviously, and Chris is absent, okay.
Yes, okay.
So, that's passed. Go ahead.
Would you like a motion for the select board's recommendation for those two articles?
Yes, please, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that the select board recommend Article One and now Article Two, the prior year appropriation on the special town meeting warrant, uh, for August twenty-second.
I will second that.
A- and will Fin Carmel still be taking, recommending or following our, our lead on this? Do we know?
Uh, I believe they have to vote to make that decision.
Susan's still there. Yeah, she's still, they have to have.
They have to meet, they have to meet.
Okay, so they have to have a meeting because then the moderator would say recommended by select board and, okay. Alright, motion's made and
Seconded, yeah.
Seconded, okay. Any discussion? Seeing none? Okay, Katie?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
And the, yes, motion, any opposed?
I think there's something in the chat.
Chris is not here, so motion carries.
What does that say?
Fincom hasn't met and won't meet unless we have something else to discuss.
Okay. So they're not, you guys aren't meeting in order to do recommendations, Susan?
Or you're gonna meet right before the meeting to make a recommendation?
Or they're keeping the same recommendations that they had on the initial.
Well, they also have the new article, so they might have to recommend or not recommend.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, that's suspended.
You have us waiting with bated breath, Susan.
If there's somehow you can get the feeling of the, uh, committee, I think it would
Oh, there we go.
look better if it says recommended by select board and finance committee.
They will meet before the meeting.
Okay.
Alright, sounds good.
I saw the article was ready, approved for the prior meetings, so we do have to rewrite, revote it.
So. So do we have to repote it?
Yes, I know.
Yeah.
I think, I think you'd wanna revote it, Susan.
So.
Lucky you, Susan, you get another meeting. Cause you, you apparently don't have enough to do like the rest of us.
Okay.
Okay, so, item two, we've taken care of closing the warrant. We've obviously reviewed it.
Yep.
Does, no other action need to be taken?
No.
Okay. And, uh, we move to item three.
But just, I think we just took that.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yeah. Because that's budget, so that would see if we were screwing with it.
Yeah, okay, so we, we should be all set with that. Alright, now we move down to contracts. And for A, we have a master plan impl- implementation contract with the MRPC. I'd like to have a motion, uh, that the regional planning agency build and implement the final master plan, um, chapter.
Yeah, yes, I can do all three of these for you. Yeah, I'm in, um, and you can discuss. So master plan, this is with MRPC in order to help us with the implementation of the master plan, which should be done soon. This is actually with me to finish up my review of services facilities. Mark C will speak with us and, uh, key members and then draft our plan to implement it. And this is already funded through a previous town meeting vote. The interim contract with, uh, Kuchar was fully discussed by the board in the second session. The only change that we made was highlighted in your packet. This was to remove some of the appeal language to go to the state labor board. This is of the record.
Which we have copies of in our files, mm-hmm.
Council, local, Kuchar. And he was, um, okay with that change, so everybody's in agreement.
Mm-hmm.
And interim contract, as you discussed with me last time, to, uh, pay Sandy the difference between hers and my salaries while she's interacting with the interim. The only thing I added was that she would get an extra week's vacation because she's going to need it.
That she would?
I'm gonna need it. Thanks, Ryan.
And a bigger pillow.
A bigger pillow.
If you can sleep.
As Ryan presented, are there any questions to, regarding the, any of those contracts?
Who needs to sign these? Is it just the chair, Ryan?
You can authorize the chair to sign.
Okay.
Okay.
Mister Chairman, would you entertain a motion for all three at the same time?
Can we do all three at the same time? Is that alright?
Uh, as long as there's no amendments read, it's yes.
As long as it's possible.
As long as there's no amendments standing in the documents.
Okay.
Okay. Mister Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we authorize you as the chairman to sign the, uh, sign, execute the master plan implementation contract with MRPC for the final chapter, the interim chief contract for the police chief Ryan Kuchar, and the interim town administrator contract with Sandy Nason.
Okay, and a motion is made.
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
Yes.
I, opposed, and one of that, Chris is not here. Motion is carried. Now we have the wage authorization.
Did the master plan get in that too?
Yeah, that was the first one, yeah.
Okay, alright, just making sure.
Now on the, uh, wage authorization. Um.
So you're actually voting to approve these because these are your appointments.
Right. That's, I was just about to say, so if we could make a motion to approve these wage authorizations, uh, for Ryan and Sandy.
Do we have them to read out loud just so that, oh, we do. Katie, you're always the leader.
Oh, Jesus, why do I hear something that's crap? Okay, let's see.
There, there's another one in there I think that you don't read right now.
Which one do I not read right now?
I think you need. The one that's not Sandy and not Ryan.
You want Ryan, McLean, Ryan, Sandy, those are the two we're dealing with right now.
Right.
Ryan Kuchar just needs to be there, it's already decided.
Right? Okay, that one doesn't need to be, okay, here we go. Alright, so do we need to do these separate?
If the chairman would entertain a motion for both at the same time, I would give him one.
Both, yeah, yeah.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion
Please.
to approve the town of Hubbardston's wa- wage authorization forms for Sandy Nason to be interim town administrator and Ryan McLean to be executive consultant, both starting on eight seventeen, twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
Second for discussion?
Motion made, seconded. Open for discussion, go ahead.
Can you just tell, just tell us how much?
Yep. Alright, so Ryan will be forty-nine, fifty-six and so will Sandy.
As she will, so. So will Sandy, yep.
Yep.
No further questions?
Anything, okay, we'll end the discussion and we'll vote. Uh, all in favor?
Hi.
Uh.
Yes, opposed? No. Motion's carried.
Does, need to be signed too, or no?
Um, they'll be signed by the chair.
You just make a pile, which you want to sign and I'll.
Yeah, yeah, okay, make a pile.
Duncan's sign later.
Before, before I, before I go, okay.
Whoops, yeah, put it in the pile.
Okay, so now we move to, um,
Kinda get you a stamp.
reviewing and signing the September state primary election warrant. Uh, this is simply a motion that's needed because it's mandatory by the state. This is for Lori.
Yes.
So, uh, a motion would be appreciated to approve the election warrant as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the, the state, yeah.
State. Yep, state, state election primary, yeah.
State primary.
Yeah, state primary for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Do you want to be the date? Tuesday, September sixth, twenty twenty-two, seven AM to eight PM
Wednesday.
in the Hubbardston Center School gym located at Eight Elm Street.
Alright, I will second that.
Motion made and seconded. Okay, any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Hi.
Yes.
Yes, opposed? Motion carries. Uh.
Well, we need to sign it.
We all need to sign it, apparently.
There's five copies.
Oh, Jesus, guys. Chicken's ready.
Then we have just a cou- couple of items to dealing with each of you as a, um, we need need a motion to appoint our board member, Peter, one. need a motion to appoint a board member, Peter Walker, to the new uh REC- RRECC committee to represent Hubbardston, dealing with the IMA. Um, the first meeting is going to be held on August uh eleventh at ten AM in the Rutland Town offices, so if someone would make that motion.
Alright, can I ask a question for Chris, Jeff?
Yeah, yep.
Ryan, so this is, they've decided to put a new committee together for this? It was this uh, the results of the um, the meetings you've had with them?
Yes. Yeah, we went to that, yep.
Yeah, so Jeff and I met with stakeholders from every community but Warren, and um we talked about the IMA and its deficiencies, and discussed length by the board, went over uh various parts of financial structure that what we're doing with each other, with that. A lot of this is revenue funded, or uh grant funded, some of the increases, but I had a lot of questions still about is this gonna continue next year, and how does that deal with our assessment, and then general financial oversight and communications in general. I'm sure Jeff can add to the conversation, but the, the outcome was, in summary, that the IMA does need to be stronger, that there needs to be uh more financial transparency and a stronger budget process. And um just more say generally from the towns that are part of the shared services agreement. So the committee is supposed to put together recommendations for every board on the new IMA, be completed by the end of the year so that we can uh have the same type of process with this department that we do with every other department.
Excellent. And there's one, one select board from every town that'll be serving on this?
TA.
For TA?
Yeah, or they represent, yeah.
And select board rep.
Okay, so it's one of each. Okay.
Yeah.
Alright, so.
So we're making a motion for Peter.
Yeah, to, to, yeah.
Doesn't matter whether it's black or blue.
He would do this, so. To appoint Peter Walker to the new RRECC committee to represent Hubbardston.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second, and seconded. Any discussion? Peter, you have accepted, correct?
I have accepted.
Thank you very much.
Not your.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do I have to vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, opposed? Thank you, Peter.
Can I see the last paper?
And we have one other pending uh point. There is going to be either Wednesday or Thursday of this week, a Zoom meeting of the towns Hubbardston.
Hardworking brain.
Hardworking brain tree. It'll be a Zoom, good luck, it'll be a Zoom meeting uh to discuss and commiserate with each other about budget. So um Heather has, has been recommended to um the uh representative, representative on that uh, for that Zoom meeting. She has accepted, it's still pending the time of the meeting, so. Could we just have it, abort a, a motion to appoint her?
I'd like to make a motion that Heather be our select board rep for this um lovely little meeting.
August fourth, August fourth.
August four.
That's the date Ryan originally gave me, so, okay.
Maybe. Okay.
So a motion made.
Peter, second that.
Second.
And seconded, okay. Any discussion? Heather, any discussion?
Thank you.
Nope.
Okay, alright. All, all in favor?
Moving forward.
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye, I'll, I'll say yes to me.
Yeah, say yes to you.
Okay, opposed, none. Motion carried, okay. Now that, so now we're at old business. I don't have anything.
So I think the last thing we need to clean up is we need to um per our discussion earlier, we may wanna consider, I think we had appointed Sandy to the TV screening committee, so we may want to um rescind that appointment and appoint Travis in her place.
Oh, pardon me, yeah, absolutely, no. She needs to. Yes, she needs to resign, need to accept her resignation and then appoint Travis, thank you. I had that in my notes too, I just went over it. So, uh, we could take a motion to accept the resignation of Sandy Nason.
I would like to make a motion for uh.
For the search committee, but then, not, she's not ready to resign yet from the interim.
Yeah.
Well, maybe.
I'd like to put a motion forward for Sandra Nason to resign from the search committee for the new town administrator.
Motion made.
Second.
Second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you, Sandy, okay? Uh, and now can we have a motion to appoint to the search committee Travis Brown? And we've spoken to Travis and he's willing to do it also, so.
Okay. I would, uh, I would like to make a motion to put forward uh
Travis.
Travis Brown on the, uh, to take the place of Sandra Nason on the uh search committee for the new town administrator.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Uh.
Yes, opposed, thank you, and thanks for bringing that up.
I jumbled it.
I had it down, I, I like buy it.
No, you did good.
Oh, alright.
Okay, anything else in old business? Okay, Ryan, you wanna do the TA report?
Yes, sir, I'll be brief. The town accountant submitted our tax relief today, which is very good work by the finance team. I asked them to speed it up for your budget consideration this fall, give you even more flexibility, and they met the challenge, so um great job by our finance team. We should have that number before the special town meeting on the twenty-second, and that also triggers the audit process, which I will get in place uh before I leave, so that um Sandy can enjoy that as well. The wifi in town hall was upgraded at no additional cost, approximately five to six times faster, uh which is something that staff and various boards were asking for, so I'm glad we were able to do that at a budget neutral number. Then lastly, the document storage project that was grant funded, started last year while it was gone, uh has been pretty successful, although it's been in the back burner, so we have scanned all of the assessing executives, which is the TA, the select board, and the land use files, and set up a new document management system called Laserfish, which allows us to digitally search any of those documents that were, were put in there. So that doesn't sound like a very exciting thing, but it is. I run information, not have to hunt it in six different locations, and be able to access it with keyword search makes us more accurate and more efficient. The um additional part of that, which is important, is although we're not quite done with the land use files, once all the land use files are scanned at some point, the public portal to those files will be open, which means that anybody can access the documents pertaining to different street files and street graphics, or looking up old permits, et cetera, will be fully publicly, publicly available twenty-four hours a day, which is really important in terms of document storage. And then we are working with the state to uh talk about eliminating the paper files, cabinets, or the documents that have been stored in this way. It is fully backed up, the insecure, more secure than our files are in produce, or move to a different platform if necessary. So this is uh where a lot of towns are going. The next step for this would be to do the rest of the files, uh which is a need, is they want, not a need. I do believe that this part was a need, given our state's concerns at town hall, and just the inability to efficiently cross those records requests, so. We do need a little bit more money, about thirteen thousand to finish up the land use files. So that's thirteen thousand for a sixty thousand dollar grant investment to finish up this project and then start thinking about phase two, which would be a couple years down the line. We put in an offer request for this. If our request does not, is not successful, then uh we'll um suggest that you put it on the capital plan to finish this up. So it's gonna take a little staff training and a little focus, but this is a good thing for the town.
Ryan, can I ask a related question to records in the land use department? So, we currently use view permit?
Yes.
Do we have a, since we only have one department up there, do we just have a one department license on that?
For view permit?
Yeah.
As far as I understand, the inspectors and the land use coordinator have active.
But do we, so I guess my question is, so I know with, I just had a conversation with them last week, so my understanding of how they set their piece up is they do one department, three departments, or unlimited departments, so you can have, you know, land use and fire, land use, fire, town administrator, land use, fire, town clerk, or everything that ever existed. Am I guessing we just have a one department use then, just land use?
No, we had fire last year on there as well.
Oh, so we probably have a three, three license use.
We implemented fire um for the burn permits last January.
Okay. Okay.
So to be fully transparent about this, um we had a lot of pushback on this. So I had direct control over the building department, and we made it happen to test the concept, and it was very successful, in my opinion. So law needs to be moved forward now to add more departments on, especially with the land use department structured the way it is, with the limited staffing we have, the ability to add staff in the future, making everything more automated is key. So you're on the right track, you just need to buy in some of the smaller departments that are now part of the rent.
Okay, my only other question on that, Ryan, I noticed in playing around with view permit, there's a function where the public can search if you turn it on um any of the permits, cause they're all public records, so Katie's building over in a house and I wanna be the neighbor that I am, and I wanna know if Katie actually pulled the permit for that, I can go on and actually look it up? Do we have um that currently turned on to public access, and if not, can we?
Yes, we should do that, and it also ties into Laserfish, which is passed, to be able to do every search and effort for any of them.
Okay, but, thank you very much, Ryan. Much appreciated.
Okay, is that it, Ryan, for you?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you. Uh, policies to review, I don't believe we have any. Okay, may I just not reasonably anticipate it by the chair, I have none. Public press questions, okay?
I'd make to make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you all.
Aye, aye, Captain.
Thanks for everything, everybody. Thanks for the help, and thanks for the contributions.